I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome you all. And we'd like to have a pledge of allegiance. Kim, would you line the dings?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kenny, could we do a roll call?
We can. Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I am here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
She's on vacation. All right. Kenny, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. The Federal Energy Regulation Commission, or FERC, sent letters regarding the 2025 safety inspection follow-up, Cushman Project, Cushman Number One spillway debris removal ramp, Cushman Project, and 2024 dam safety surveillance and monitoring report, Cushman Project. North Mason Chamber of Commerce sent a letter regarding their potential support of the Belfair sewer extension. Patricia Bradley submitted an advisory board application for the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. And Washington State County Road Administration Board sent a letter regarding the withdrawal of the Shelton Valley Road culvert replacement project.
Thank you. And now is a time when we have an open forum for citizen input on anything that you would like to cover. So, any citizens in the room have any comments they would like to make? How about in our Zoom land, is there anybody? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Now is the time for an adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the minutes for July 21st and July 28th, 2025, all briefing minutes, and July 22nd of 2025, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion to the second for approval of the minutes from July 21st and July 28th, 2025, the briefing minutes, and July 22nd, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. We have an action agenda. Commissioner Netherland, would you read items 8.1 through 8.9? Take 10 through 19.
Mr. Chair. Item number 8.1 reads, approval of the warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance claims clearing fund warrants number 8114022 through 8114331. The amount, $3,273,517.80. The direct deposit fund warrants number 118112 through 118526. The amount, $1,030,231.91. The salary clearing fund warrants number 7009035 through 7009062. The amount, $667,259.42. Item number 8.2, approval of fiscal year FY 2026 through 2027, Department of Commerce Consolidated Homeless Grant, the CHG, inter-agency agreement in the amount of $7,453,546. Item number 8.3, approval, Washington State Conservation Commission contract for the voluntary stewardship program, the VSP, in the amount of $290,000 from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2027. The approval of the amendment number five to contract number 19-053 with the Mason Conservation District as the lead entity of the contract. Item number 8.4, approval of the resolution extending the increased hourly rate for contracted felony criminal defense attorneys from $125 an hour to $175 an hour through December 31st, 2025. Item number 8.5, approval to purchase a new door through Casey Door Company for the sheriff's office parking lot for the estimated amount $20,113.84. That will come out of the real estate excise tax or otherwise our REIT funds. Item number 8.6, approval to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner and grant the vacation of the right-of-way as petitioned, subject to the conditions contained in the findings of fact, conclusion of law, and recommendation of the hearing examiner for road vacation number 424. Item number 8.7, approval to acknowledge the county's engineer submission of the Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP, the grant application, Washington State Department of Transportation, Washington State DOT, and authorize the chair to sign all pertinent documents relating to the grant, including agreements and certifications, should funding be awarded. Item number 8.8, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, at 9:15 a.m. to review the 2026 Annual Construction Program and approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, at 9:15 a.m. to review the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, for 2026 through 2031. And item number 8.9, approval for the Public Works Director and Deputy Director, Utilities Waste Management, to sign the 2025 through 2027 Local Solid Waste Funding Assistance, LSWFA, agreement.
Item 8.10, approval of the letter of support for Public Utilities District, PUD, number one, some application to the Economic Development Association 2025 Disaster Supplemental Grant Program for the Jorsad Substation. 8.11, approval of a letter of support for the Public Utilities District, PUD, number three, application for the Economic Development Association, EDA, 2025 Disaster Supplement Grant Program for the Belfair Urban Growth Area Electrical Projects. Item 8.12, approval for Commissioner Netherland to sign the exclusive sales and listing agreement with Richard Beckman Realty Group, LLC, for parcel number 22005-53-00012 at 1581 East Phillips Lake Loop Road. Item 8.13, approval of to reclass Maggie Houston from Administrative Assistant to Administrative Services Manager and revise the Administrative Service Manager position description to better generalize the role encompassed encompassing responsibilities for both the prosecutor's and public defender's program. Item 8.14, approval of the professional services contract with Angela Avery Law, PLLC, to assume the essential duties of the chief public defender's position from August 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025, in the amount of $51,594. Item 8.15, approval of the letter of opposition to the Washington State Department of Ecology Draft Tier Two Anti-Degradiation Analysis for the Washington State Forest Practice Board, Proposed Western Washington Type NP Water Buffer Rules. Approval for the Public Works Director to execute amendment number one to the solid waste drop box hauling and recycling and regional recycling drop station program contract with Mason County Garbage and recycling, extending the contract to April 1st, 2031, with two optional five-year automatic renewals, subject to mutual written agreement. Item 8.17, approval of the resolution giving the county administrator the authority to negotiate hourly contracts with public defense misdemeanor attorneys up to $150 an hour from August 4th, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. Item 8.18, approval to vote for Clallum County Commissioner Randy Johnson as the county representative position on the Department of Natural Resources, DNR, Board of Natural Resources, BNR. Item 8.19, approval of the resolution, amending resolution 2025-31, creating an administrative services manager's position in the public defense office at range 34 on the non-represented salary schedule. At this time, anyone can remove any of these items for further discussion if they would like. Commissioner, would you like any of them removed? Nor would I. Is there anybody in the audience that would like any items removed for more discussion? Seeing none, how about in Zoom? Seeing none. Entertain a motion for approval of the action agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda as presented, with just a comment or so. I want to give a special thank you. Commissioner Sharon Trask is not here today. She did some hard work along with our HR department and stuff to accomplish some things at the Public Defender's Office and make some changes. We were able to keep some staff there. It's been a very, very, very interesting year. And with all the stuff the state is doing, it's put a lot of weight on a lot of people. With that being said, we wanted to give some props to Commissioner Trask for her hard work and working with staff and with our HR department for pulling off some pretty nice things. And we're going to be paying and creating a position here that will help to solidify and keep us moving in a forward direction with the Public Defender's Office. And I very much just appreciate the work that they did there. I also, there was another thing that Commissioner Trask had done. I want to make sure that we acknowledge her with it. And that is the work that she's doing on that water buffers rule that she had us. She's representing this county to make sure that the right people understand and know that if we create these buffers around the logging areas that people talk about, the loss to schools and the ports and stuff is huge. I mean, it's huge. And people don't take that into consideration, that out there, trees for us are, is a crop, just like you would strawberries or artichokes or anything else. And when you take away that crop from the farmer, which is us, we lose those monies. And it's not just our revenues. $525,000 went to North Mason School District last year. Imagine that disappearing. It's hard enough as it is right now. So those that get mad at us, I appreciate it, and you're entitled to your opinion. But I had people that were really upset at Commissioner Trask for doing it. But she's taking the right stand and the stand taken by this commission if we vote accordingly. And I just wanted to let that be known.
And also like to acknowledge Maggie's efforts. She has been holding our public defense together since we've lost our chief public defender. She has been doing just a remarkable job of keeping everything afloat over there. We're recognizing that today, and we're moving her to a, we're creating a new, what we call range, a new position. It's not actually a new position, but we're putting her into a place where she's being compensated for the work that she's doing. Just want to appreciate all she's done to keep us afloat. For those that don't know, our state has put us in quite a bind with their Supreme Court's decision on public defense. And it is really making life difficult for everybody in our criminal justice system. So, let's hope we get that resolved. With that, we'll take a vote on the adoption of the action agenda. All those in favor of approving the action agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We just cleared 9:15, so. We, first we'll do with the other business, department heads and elected officials. Do we have anyone in the room? Or auditors?
Murray Fisher, Steve Duncan, Mason County Auditor. Hey, today's August 5th, election day for the August 5th primary election. So if you haven't had a chance to turn in your ballot, please be sure to get it postmarked by 8:00 p.m. today or get it into a drop box by 8:00 p.m. today. So a fairly small election. We only sent out about 9,400 ballots, but we're still looking for a good turnout. And we'll be posting initial results shortly after 8:00 p.m. tonight. Thank you very much.
Want to give, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair? I want to give a thank you for stepping up and helping us with the Island Lake ballot process they're doing that was not required by you. But I wanted to let everybody know that you did step up to take it. That keeps the integrity of that vote together. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads in the room? Or electors? Seeing none, how about in Zoom? All right. Covers that. So now is the time for a public hearing. We have, we've passed our 9:15 deadline, so we can do that. I'd like to open the hearing to consider and read the agenda and announcement. 10.1?
Yep.
Yeah. Public hearing to consider approval of five 2024 open space applications as recommended by the assessor's office and community development staff. Claire Stiles and Kel Rowan.
I don't see Ciara, but I'll go ahead and.
Hi, Kel.
Hi. I'm Kel Rowan with the Community Development Department. And several years ago, the open space program was being looked at to convert to a public benefit rating system. Because it is the commissioner's responsibility to determine if properties could go into the open space and not the assessors. But the assessor, Patty McLean, and I worked together and agreed that the Community Development Department would assist the assessor's office in making determinations and recommendations for the open space program. And so this is, I think, the third year that we've worked in partnership. And I think it's a great program. And it allows us to feel confident in making a joint recommendation to the board on whether or not properties get approved. So with that, we do have five applications. We did recommend approval of all of them. We received several comments for the Sun Rock Conservation Area. I knew about this place, but I did not realize how incredibly special it was. I was curious if Commissioner Tarzwell has ever dived there himself. I know that he's a diver. But so that was really fun to read all of those letters from folks from all over, not outside of Washington State as well, people that frequent that area as an incredible dive place. So that's one of the five applications. With that, we are recommending approval as shown on the spreadsheet. And the assessor's office has details on how that works. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Now that's been presented, are there any questions to the staff regarding the presentations?
Quite a bit. People that have been waiting in, they don't realize how much work has gone on before we ever even get it to this point. Before they ever get here, you have been over every aspect of this to make sure that it is legal and that it is, it fits within the parameters. And I don't remember any in the last, I had one, what was it, 13 years ago? But other than that, I don't remember any of us ever challenging the work that you guys have ever done on any of these. Do you know of any that we've said no to once we got to this point?
I, I remember the first year there were some that we thought, well, no. I mean, that's really just their yard that they can't develop in a shoreline anyway. And so we did deny that. I remember that specifically because it was a small lot. And they couldn't clear in their shoreline buffer. And we just didn't feel that was appropriate for open space. Whereas most of these are giving up development rights in order to keep the land in an open space environment, so.
And that's important. They're giving up development rights in order to do that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone in Zoom land want to question, have a question for staff? Seeing none. Yeah, my only comment about Sun Rock is it is a great dive site. And it does bring quite a bit of tourist dollars to Mason County. It is, it's a dive site that just attracts people from, I don't know about all over the world, but certainly from the Pacific Northwest, all over Washington, all through Oregon. People come up to see that dive site. It's pretty spectacular if you're a diver. So. Now. Now we will open the public comment for that, this particular part of the hearing. Do we have any public comment?
Smart not to snatch defeat out of the jaws of victory.
Okay. Anybody in on Zoom? Seeing none. All right, we will close public testimony. We're opening for commissioners deliberation and/or a motion.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I want to first thank you to all the staff because people, again, they don't recognize, there's a lot of work that goes into this for this ever even gets to this point or wouldn't be here. As was mentioned, there was a point where there was, it's been cleaned up since then. We don't have those issues anymore. So by the time it gets to us, it's already been gone through. So I want to thank you, and I want to thank the applicants that put it in there. Yes, they get breaks, but at the same time, as was pointed out, they're giving up things for open space for the public. And in this community, that's highly appreciated. So with that, I want to say thank you. And I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we approve all five of the open space applications as recommended by the assessor's office and community development.
We have a motion to approve the open space application as recommended by the assessor's office and community development staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. Then we will close this public hearing for that item. And now we will open another public hearing.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item 10.2, public hearing to consider public testimony for the amendments to the Mason County Code, Chapter 5.18, Temporary Outdoor Public Events, TOPE, and approval to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, at 9:15 a.m. to deliberate and vote on the TOPE amendments. Staff.
All right, yeah. Good morning, Kel Rowan, Mason County Community Development Department. And I also have representatives from our fire marshal and environmental health today. So if you have additional questions that I'm not able to answer. We did brief on this topic several times and met individually with the commissioners to go over the details of what this is and what it's not. It does allow for events of all sizes to host an event that may not otherwise be allowed within their zoning district. And so this allows for things such as maybe a concert at your own private home where you're selling tickets or even providing a lottery of tickets or just allowing the general public to attend an event on your property. And as long as they're following some certain kind of life safety, environmental health rules, then it will be allowed within a certain number of days per year. So one of the things that staff, we are recommending the amendments as proposed in your packet. However, we would like you to consider the number of days per year. I think it's written in here as 14 days. But that could be increased or decreased or kept the same. So it's 14 cumulative days throughout the year. And one of the other issues is thinking about the permit process and whether we need to have events. The idea was not to make someone get a permit for each and ever of every event they hold, but to have a permit once for the entire year or maybe once every two years, they would renew that permit to just confirm that they're still meeting all of the guidelines. And so that's another consideration that the staff is looking for the board to consider. And perhaps if there's public testimony, we did do outreach to folks that are hosting these events currently, some who are, would not be allowed under the zoning district. And so we've had to do stop works. But we want to be able to allow them to continue those types of events within these parameters. I'm going to stop there, see if you have any questions. And I have backup if necessary.
I do. So, just a comment from me. Currently, when we have permitting through the Health Department, when it comes to food, it's a 21-day. So being consistent, I'd love for us to consider if we do something like this, to have it be a 21-day maximum. You know, one permit good for that many, but they have to put down their dates and stuff like that. That's the thing when you do it for the Health Department. If you're going to attend events, you know the events, and you put them down there. And they have a calendar that you're basically buying into at the time. I, also though, the idea of people paying for a permit, and you were talking about the issues that come with that. Is there a minimum or a max, a minimum for it to even be required or looked at? Because it doesn't make sense for people to come up and start doing a permit for an event of 50 people or 100 people. I know myself, I could see, you know, 250 or 500 or something before I would even think a permit would even be looked at. But that's my personal opinion. I was just wondering what your thoughts were and where you landed.
We did consider that, and it just didn't make sense to kind of try to, we didn't know where that arbitrary line was. So it's really if it's events, obviously if someone had a small event and it didn't disturb anyone and we never knew about it, it's, you know, that's not something we would be able to do something. And so it might self-police itself as far as, once it gets to a large enough size and we know when they didn't get a permit, then that's when we'd say, hey, there's actual permit requirements for this type of an event. If you understand what I'm saying.
I do. I just always wonder about, interpretation is always the scariest part. Once it gets out there, it depends on who goes out to do the interpretation. You and I have dealt with that for years.
Right.
So, you know, good fences make for good neighbors, good policies make for good fences. Maybe having a number to protect them also might be something we can consider. That's all I have.
Any other comments?
Questions?
Questions?
You can ask the question. Yeah. He's asking over here in the corner if he can ask a question. Can you, you have a question or do you want to make a comment? That's two different times.
Oh, wait for a comment.
Okay. I would like to make a comment that this is something that was quite challenging for me because I, having studied and taught the Constitution for a couple of years, Kel and I kind of went round and round about this as, you know, the right to peaceably assemble is guaranteed in our First Amendment. So, this was, this is kind of difficult, and we went round and round about it. But as commissioners, we have two duties, uphold the Constitution first. But as commissioners, we have two duties, uphold the Constitution first. That's the first thing we have to look at. The second thing is public safety, public health, making sure that, that, uh. One person's right to peaceably assemble is not going to interfere with the right of somebody to have. Safe water, safe, you know, not have their property burned to the ground because things get out of control. So we have to try and weigh those two and balance them. So it's, uh, it's quite a challenge. I know Kel is probably a little frustrated with, with my, uh, my approach to it. But, uh, I think we came to a fairly good compromise on this. That's my comment. I will now close public comment.
She, did she have a question or comment?
Um, I have a comment.
Okay, no, a comment, there's a comment period.
Okay.
So questions.
I guess the question part would be, I review the, so I am one of the people who has property, who has had a music festival there. And I got stopped for it. Um, and I was really super unhappy. Uh, we only had three hundred and fifty people show up at ours. Um, we got tagged for selling ti- tickets, um, and then allowing people to camp while they were there. Um, but in the proposal that you guys have, it says that potable water. Um, is required to be part of a public system. So we have a well. So does that mean that we would have to truck water in, in order to provide potable water?
That's a good question.
You have several options in this particular case, uh, with the, uh, with the way the policy is written. You have an option to have a hookup to the potable water or operate drinking or water like in the model, water.
Can you clarify that a little bit more for me? Is it what, gonna be required to bring in water that is from a sanctioned well, such as a community well, so, and stuff like that? Or can they still operate using their own well?
Uh, they could, uh, continue using their well as long as it's approved, uh, as a public, uh, well, it is, uh, from my understanding. Or they can bring bottled water.
Okay, so approved as a public, I've got so many years of this, I, I've gotta be very careful, uh, you don't mind, Mr. Chair? I gotta be very careful because that, that means several different things over the years. Uh, the way that was said, that, that means it would have to be a class A or such system. Or, or, or class B, but either one, that's not a residential well. Uh, there, there are some residents that have that.
Correct.
But in, in a regular, uh, in a R R ten or something like that, that's not gonna be happening. Cause, uh, they're not gonna have a community that they're using that off of. So the answer would be basically no, if we continued with this at a residential. Unless you're part of a community well system that is certified as a public system. So that.
That's the way that I would have took from the policy.
That's what I, I thought, okay, so, so I'm not speaking for against, I'm just trying to clarify so you hear the answer for what you're.
So what I understood, just so that I'm clear too, because that was a lot.
Yeah.
Um, is that I have R R ten and a huge oil well, so our water would not be acceptable.
If it passed in this form, but that may not be how the end works out. So that's where your comment would come in.
Thank you.
And my understanding about the water is regardless of these amendments were approved or not approved. The water is still an issue outside of this and that's why, you know, any events that where you're hosting the public. Um, you have to provide the bottled water or have an approved through the Department of Health. State Department of Health on an approved water system to provide drinking water to the public. But there are, are alternatives with that, um, with the bottled water.
Got a comment?
I have a question about, um, you said that it was a state requirement on the group well. I don't believe that is a true statement because Gray's Harbor uses their well at their Grange. And it's not a community group A well and they can serve their public for their festival and their, their, their events that they do there. They can cook with it and everything. They do fundraisers. Our county, you cannot do that. So it's not a state regulation, I don't believe. I think that was.
Or maybe not a enforced regulation, that the county.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't, I have not researched the Gray's Harbor Grange and whether or not they have a group B or A.
A state regulation or a county regulation.
Right, but the water issues are, I, I believe our county is given authority through the state. It's not.
But it's a county decision, not a state decision.
If I may, uh, one interesting thing is I do know that certain, uh, groups. That, that are fraternal and stuff like that are exempt from some of the regulations when it comes to, you know, cooking and stuff like that. They don't have to follow the, the same things. They're not inspected in the same way. Why that is, I don't know. I know that may be one of the situations here. I don't know. But, uh, I do know fraternal orders and stuff are allowed to cook and, and, and present food in manners. That a restaurant could not without being licensed.
And we're trying to keep it as a question period. If you have questions for the staff, we'll, we'll have a comment period here. Just a moment, so we'll, uh, do we have any questions in Zoom? Seeing none. Are there any more questions? Last chance, okay. So I will finish the question period. We'll now open public comments. So this is your opportunity to stand up and make a comment. Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Chad Swizer. I'm the owner, caretaker of Peace Valley Farm Grounds. Um, I am also another venue that, um, bring the, the community together, uh, for great things. I'm here today because one of the proposed regulations that would limit how many people. A private venue like mine can host without increased government involvement. I respectfully urge you to reconsider this proposal, not just for me, but for all the landowners, families and community members. Who rely on these gathering spaces for meaningful moments. Peace Valley isn't just a piece of land. It's a place of healing, celebration and connection. It's where couples get married. Where local artists, musicians and small businesses come together. Where families reconnect and where we build something beautiful through events like Peace Valley Barefoot Festival, which has taken place this weekend. We do this responsibly. We collaborate with first responders. We have safety protocols. We prioritize respect for the land, for our neighbors and for the community at large. These kind of venues offer one of the last opportunities for people to gather freely in nature. Without excessive permit, permitting fees or government in, uh, intrusion. If we start limiting the number of people who can come together without jumping through bureaucratic hoops. We are slowly checking out what makes rural life vibrant and community rich. This is personal for me. I lost my son in June. I started my festivals because of his injury to bring the community together, to help. Bring awareness to traumatic brain injury and what the family goes through. It's a journey. And my community stepped up and helped me. They came together and supported me, my son, my family. When I lost a lot of family and friends that abandoned me, my community stepped up and supported me. Without doing what I do, I wouldn't have that support and to be honest, I don't know where I'd mentally be. Losing my son in June, we held a celebration of life just the other weekend. We had hundreds of people there, you know, and, uh, to ever limit. Someone from having a personal gathering like that. My events are private. We invite people through our groups. If you're a member of our group, you could, you have the right to invite people. We would like to open to the public and work with all the entities involved. So we can make it even bigger and better and more beautiful for more people to heal. But if we're gonna put a number on it, it's gotta be something realistic. We can't just say a small amount. Cause whose interpretation is a small amount? My small amount is a thousand people. I mean, you go to Oyster Fest and we cram, I don't know, have a lot of people in that little, little gathering there. I don't do that. I have forty acres and, you know, I have three, four hundred people out there. And in twenty twenty two, I had forty eight art, artists that traveled from all over the country on their own dime. The hotels here helped me out by putting them up in hotels, but they traveled on their own dime to come play for my son and our, and what our belief is. And it was the largest gathering of outside artists in the nation's history. It was during COVID, so of course it didn't get a lot of talk. I'm still in touch with all these artists. They reach out to me. They check on what, you know, my son's journey and they're still willing to help me today. A lot of them come back to this community. They were just downtown. Megan Paulette came from Pittsburgh to play back down at the Cantina and bring people back together. So we bring tourism here as well. We brought bands from Canada. So it was an international lineup. So we do a lot of good things and to try to put rules on us when it's not that big of a group. If we hit a thousand, I could see, yeah, you know, put some things in place, but we have med tents. We have, I mean, thousands of gallons of water. I live in a wetland, so we will never burn. It, it, you can't, it, it's seven to nine o'clock in the evening, my grass is wet. Everybody's like, wow, my feet are cold. It's like, yeah, welcome to Barefoot. This is what we go through every night, but we're safe in everything we do. Chief Wheeler comes to my property, checks things out and it's like, you know, he understands. We had one time where there was an incident happen, a little fire broke out from a firework, cause we do do a firework show. So we worked with them, moved all of where we did everything. They're like, perfect, this works great. So we work with everyone. We, we communicate. So, um, please don't, don't cuff us and, uh, stop people from healing the way we do. A lot of people have quit drinking and using drugs because they come to my place. And now they come and donate their time with me. I have people on my property right now while I'm here, building a stage cover. Cause I had no money this year and everybody's just donating whatever lumber they can to help me. The system bankrupted me and I don't want the system to handcuff what people do for fun. We gotta laugh. I don't want people to sit in their houses on their electronics. We have almost a hundred kids that come to my place. It's an amazing time. And I encourage you, your names are on the list. If the commissioners would like to come out and see exactly what we do, please. We invite you, come see what we do. Um, thank you for your time.
Any other comments?
Good morning, commissioners. Um, my name is Sadie Holter and I do Tentacle Forest and Amen Brother. I mean, that's exactly where we're at. Um, we happen to have our event, um, was the first time that we had the Aurora Burge Alice. And it was magical. I have a magical piece of land. Uh, it's only six acres, but it does have a creek that flows through it with an island. Uh, it's all open pasture. It's beautiful and we only had three hundred and fifty people there at our music festival. Um, and so I will tell you that with all of that, there was not a cigarette butt. Not a, a piece of garbage, not a water bottle, nothing left on my property. It was completely cleaned. Um, our production, uh, crew actually went. And they did meet with the fire commissioner, uh, they met with the first aid responders. We actually even had the E M Ts came and hang out for like an hour and a half. The chief of police, uh, briefed his crew and let them know that we had it going on. They even donated Narcan and some, uh, fentanyl drug testing kits in case there was an issue, an issue. Um, we had perking all lined up. We, it was really just a wholesome event about being out in the, in the woods. And, and commemorating together. And I would say that, you know, if you had to regulate anything. Um. I totally lost my, totally free my thought there, but, uh, um. Putting limitations on all of it, um, it really just isn't, it isn't the right thing for the people. You know, I, I would agree with him on a thousand, um, but now if you start to regulate it, you completely X N A us. Because of the, the potable water, which seems bizarre to me in the fact that I have a certified well that I drink from every day. So when people come to my house, that's not an issue. But when I invite more people, now, now it has to be. A bigger system, something that's almost untangible. Um, in addition to that, I would say that, uh, paying three hundred and fifty dollars for a fee. And having it sixty days prior to, uh, you're gonna have to plan more than sixty days in advance. In order to have an event of any kind of structure like that to begin with. And for each, I, I know Kel's working to try to figure out a way to do that so that it's not every event. Um, but I would definitely ask that you guys reconsider all of that. I know that a biggest p- piece of it was three hundred feet, having the nearest neighbor three hundred feet. I don't have anyone within three hundred feet of my property and the only reason that I was tagged was because I had one neighbor. Who, I, I think he's gotta be like nine hundred feet from my property line, made a complaint. And that was how we got flagged. So I, I think maybe if you wanted to say a regulation that if you don't have anyone within three hundred feet. You know, there's no reason to have regulations put on it. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your time. I very much appreciate it. I have watched, um, all of your guys' briefings and your feedback and super appreciate your background and where you're coming from. And I appreciate what you guys do. It matters.
Thank you.
Can I make one quick comment?
Let's see if there's anyone else first here. Any other public comment in the room on Zoom? Is there anyone else has a comment? It's seeing none, yeah, go ahead.
Again, my name is Chad Swizer. Um, my neighbors actually vend at my festival. They come bring their cedar, work little art. They come join it. I have one neighbor that's been upset with me. And they're like almost a half mile away and they hit me up at seven o'clock on a Friday night saying, hey, can you like turn the music down? It's like, what? It's like, we haven't even really, we haven't done anything yet. So our neighbors join in. It's a community thing. We park at some of the neighbors and we bring in water, cause I don't have a well like that, but, so yes. The neighbors are all in on it.
Alright, seeing no more public comment, I will close the public testimony. Now, it's, uh, we're, we're just moving this to another public hearing. So this, this is really not going to be in action on this particular one. We will have another hearing on this. And we will have an opportunity to discuss this. Commissioner Neville, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, so, you know, we could choose to even end it now. But we could also choose when we discuss this to put it out in a way so that we could have this thing and then have further communications. That was the design and that was the conversations that we were having and I tend to still support that. Because this is an opportunity to, to, to talk about this. One of the things I want to point out is, uh. You know, I'm in the same camp as you are. The only problem is, is there's a reality that they have to deal with and I have not seen how to balance it. I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm dealing with it myself all the time. No matter what, when we have a, a, an event. Even a three hundred feet away, that neighbor's driveway that gets blocked is still a problem for that neighbor and it affects them. They have to worry that if you have three hundred people there and you are a professional setting. That the vendors are actually certified and feeding them food that's not gonna get them sick. Cause that is part of the things they have to worry about and think about. So the property rights of those around them, the, the safety of those that are there. Those are all legitimate worries that they have. But again, I'm not sure that this is the answer. I'm still trying to work through it myself. One of the problems that I have is I see even aside from your events, we're gonna be impacting, uh, for the old timers festival. We're gonna be a, uh, we're gonna be, uh, uh, the, the picnics at Fire District twelve. When you have all those people that come out and there's a lot. Um, I have Allen Days. Are they gonna have to start getting a permit? Cause those are outside into the area. You say no? But that's the, the concept I'm still trying to figure out because then you have the water festival. You have all these different things. That are going on in the community and I want to protect everybody, but I want to make sure those can continue. So I would hope, I'm gonna ask that you guys actually take the time to meet with staff and see if there's some way. That now that you've come together here, if there's some solutions to help offset this. Uh, I would love to have you guys come back in support of something that you can work with them. If not, I understand that too, because these things are important and, and I attended the Celebration of Life Free Sun. Uh, but it isn't even about that. I'd actually never. Uh, but it isn't even about that. I'd actually never been to your concert or anything like that. Uh, I would like to someday. It would be nice, it's just I I do things. But the idea that we take away the people's ability to celebrate and to have events is scary to me. But right now, as we've made clear, we don't have the ability to do it. It hasn't been put into our code to where it's even allowed at different times. So they're battling back and forth trying to find a way to allow it too. So please take a little time as we go if we decide to table this for, to set it up for the August nineteenth. Take some time and meet with our staff and see if you can't find a solution and bring us back a solution on the nineteenth that we could all be happy with.
Yeah, I'm I'm certainly open for suggestions. We went, Kel and I went round and round and round about this, trying to satisfy both both issues because I I tend to be more of a purist. It's like the First Amendment doesn't put a limit on it, it just says you can peaceably assemble. So I'm I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying. Um, but I also understand it's also our duty to try and protect public health, public safety and neighbors. So, you know, I, the the simplest way to put it is, we need help. You know, if there's if there's better ways to do this, please let us know. So, I don't think we're going to, we'll move to move this to this.
I can make a motion, uh, Mr. Chair. I move that we uh uh put this out forward to August nineteenth and leave it open for public testimony again uh when we revisit it.
Okay, we have a motion to move, continue this, table this, I guess till uh Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine fifteen and we will leave it open for public comment and public testimony. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
I wanna thank our staff. They've worked really hard and they, we're like herding cats on this one. I know we are and I apologize about that cause we can't meet together on a regular basis to talk about some of this stuff. So it happens in that room for the five, ten minutes that we have and they have to try and herd these cats. So thank you for all your work that you're doing and please don't take it that we're saying a negative with everything you're doing. I know that you're trying to find the answer too, so thank you.
Yep. All right, let's move on with our board calendars and reports. Oh, I think I'm supposed to close the, you have to gavel and close the public hearing.
Yep.
Commissioner now.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick one. I, coming up, I have the Orkin Board, I have the Sheriff's Breakfast, the Ridge uh Business Appreciation, Peninsula of Transportation. Now the Republicans are having a picnic, we'll probably both be at that. We just attended an event, uh, that was a wonderful event, uh, in great view. Nick came, came out and played and it was what a great community event. We need a lot more just like that, which is an interesting concept because of the meeting we just had, isn't it? Uh, with with that being said, uh, uh, we were also together for different things, uh, and I just had uh Left Board and Mason Transit Authority and I'm having a problem with my calendar, that's why I'm doing it in short form. But if you know of any things we're gonna be together, let me know.
Uh, yeah, not not.
Oh, coming up, North Mason Community Voice. We're both gonna be there for for that uh on the fourteenth, I believe that is.
Yeah, it's a uh, come meet your new commissioner is what they billed it as.
Yeah.
I'll get to uh have an opportunity to meet with them. More people up at North Mason Community Voice. We were up there last month doing an America Two Fifty event.
I wish I'd seen that. I missed it.
Yeah, it was it was pretty comical. Uh, my event, I had, let's see, since I got plus three today, so a few more things. Uh, we have the commissioner meeting. Okay, nothing showing up, anything else?
I think it's both of us today. I have issues with my calendar.
Plus three, yes. All right. I have Schuham Rotary tomorrow, which I may or may not make it to. I have a meeting, a lunch meeting tomorrow. I have Sheriff Breakfast on Thursday up at Spencer Lake. And what else? I have an invitation to Co-Sheltering Forum. It's a forum about sheltering people and their pets. That's up in Port Orchard.
I have that same, I I may be there, some may be together.
Okay.
I didn't see it there, but I remember it.
I don't know whether, yeah, I don't know that I'll be able to make that. Uh, I have a meeting with uh Ocean Strategies at nine thirty on Friday and then I have a kidney doctor appointment to see if I can't get rid of my kidney stones on Friday, two o'clock. Yeah. Uh, then I have uh an event out at Harstein Island. There's a Fire District event. I'm invited to, not exactly sure what's happening out there. That's on Saturday. Uh, next week, commissioner meetings Monday and Tuesday. I have Mace Comm on Tuesday at three. Uh, Criminal Justice on Wednesday. Five more that day. What are the five? And I've got a lunch meeting, I have the IT Steering Committee and then Chamber after hours. On Wednesday. Next steps, collaboration meeting. It's on the fourteenth at nine. Usually that's on Wednesday. Wonder if I have that wrong. That's generally right after the Criminal Justice meeting, so. Interesting. Uh, that pretty much covers it. Next two weeks. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion.
We threw you out if you said nay. How are you, awesomeness?